I will call this meeting to order. The Village Board of Trustees for Thursday, November 9th. It's time now is 6:01. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. There are no mayoral appointments tonight. I do have public comment, but I do want to actually do the employee recognition if I could do that first because I know there are some young children here who came in for their parents' recognition. So if we could go to that first, I'd like to call up Squad Three, Dispatchers Kurt Grodsky and Dan Farrell, and Police Officers Tim Muller, Kyle McGinnis, Lee Pulliam, and James Moore. And this was an Employee Recognition Award by Sergeant David P. Dorcheck, and I'd like to hand it over, I guess, to the sergeant.
He's right there.
Sorry, you're not going to get off that easy. You're going to have to come up to the podium.
I'm trying to fly in the lobby there for the board.
And please, if you could, please explain the recognition of these officers and gentlemen.
Sure. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, everybody. We trained a couple of days before this event happened, and it happened at one of the scenarios was exactly what happened that night. So we were working the three to eleven, our squad, and a lady called up. She was suicidal. She talked to our dispatches, one of them is Kurt Grodsky over there, and explained to her what she was doing. She said she had slit her wrist. She gave a location. These guys were able to talk to her on the phone, were able to track down where she was, what house she was in, and what her status was. My squad responded. We got to the house. It's a apartment. It's a two-story house, apartment on the bottom and apartment on the second floor. We found an open window on the first floor. Two of my guys went into the window, but they couldn't get access to the second floor. So the only way to get in was the front door. She wouldn't open the door for us. We heard her screaming. We gained access through the front door. When we got access through the front door, she was sitting on top of the stairs, very distraught, agitated, angry. We didn't know if she had a weapon on her or not. There was a bottle of bleach next to her. Officer McGinnis and Officer Muller were able to speak to her, and they were able to calm her down, and we were able to go in. And Officer McGinnis is also a paramedic, so he was able to go upstairs and start a treatment. And we were able to calm her down. We were able to bring the ambulance crew in, and we were able to move her from the house to the hospital for her to get aid. So these guys did a great job because not only did we handle the situation that was through there, but with the training that we had, they were able to talk her down, to calm her down. Nobody got hurt, and we were able to ascertain, you know, to ascertain her, to get her into, to come down the stairs, get on a gurney, and actually go to the hospital. And I think that's a great thing, and I think that's why I recognize them.
Would any of you like to say anything?
Mayor Menger, just read their names off the board.
Yeah, yeah. Again, it's Kurt Grodsky, who's actually our newest member of the dispatch team. Is that correct, Kurt?
Correct.
When did you begin again?
April.
April, so there you go. And Dan Farrell?
Couldn't make it.
Couldn't make it, okay. Tim Muller?
Yes, same thing.
Okay. Kyle McGinnis? All right, we all know Kyle. Kyle's always on his bicycle, by the way. Lee Pulliam? And James Moore? All right. And who's the child here?
That's little Kyle.
That's what I thought. All right, all right. Anyway, we're glad that he's here for his dad. All right. Anyway, thank you all again, and thank you, Dave Dorcheck, for, again, putting their names forward to be recognized this month. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you very much. And now we will go to public comment. So do we have a list?
Yes, we do have a list. The first one, so just to give the board an overview, we have public comment, we have three public hearings. So to start off, some of the folks are going to provide public comment and provide public hearing comment as well. But to get started, we're just going to talk about just the public comment folks for now.
Yeah, let's hold the public hearing comments for when the public hearings are on.
Exactly. So the first one is for Erin Hattrick-Meehan. And as an overview, I'm sure all of you are aware, but you have three minutes to speak for public comment.
I wrote a 20-minute piece here.
Speak quickly.
Yes. I am going to start off by showing I am here representing the concerned citizens of Southampton. I'm sure if you didn't see this in today's paper, you should look at it. It'll give you a much more detailed overview of a set of plans that we have drawn up. I'm going to read a prepared statement just because it's a lot easier. "I'm here tonight on behalf of the concerned citizens of Southampton, and I'm publicly asking for an opportunity to present an alternate set of plans with regards to Pond Lane, as seen in this week's Southampton Press. We think these are a better set of plans for the Pond Lane, Lake Agawam locality. You are elected officials who are supposed to make decisions based on what is best for this community, not one person, John Paulson in particular in this case. I have said before, there is a feeling that there are other forces at play, when you cannot even afford the local people an opportunity to speak. I keep hearing that this issue is a done deal. I can't comprehend the idea of done deals. It's almost tyrannical. The people of this community deserve to see and hear the plans that we have commissioned, which ultimately will save Pond Lane from unnecessary closure. At the very least, you owe us that opportunity. Tonight, the board is planning to pass a resolution that will not only increase their term of office from two to four years, but will also provide raises to the village board members. Very interesting for a board that seems to have no interest in hearing what the people who voted for them want and whose taxes will ultimately pay their salaries. With a simple display of hands, I ask those around me to show this board and our mayor that we are many and our opinions matter." Can I have a show of hands? Bingo. "The people on our side of this issue greatly outnumber the few that will benefit from your proposed plan to close Pond Lane, and that should be remembered by the people sitting on our village board." Thank you.
Thank you.
The second one is Jessie Mezicapa.
I was going to wait for the public hearing.
Just the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one is Natalie Sisko. No?
My name's Natalie Sisko. I live on Meadowgrass Lane, and I'm representing the homeowners there who...
Can the mic?
Oh, sorry. I don't like to hear my own voice. It's distracting. I'm representing the homeowners on Meadowgrass Lane in that development who live near Buzz Choo. So just by a show of hands, who likes to be woken up in the middle of the night? Nobody? Trustees? For the last few years, we've been woken up every single week by slamming from Buzz Choo dealership. And I am physically tired of being woken up and calling our wonderful police force who've stopped them, and I just, I just want a good night's sleep. And so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that that's going on and that I'd really love them to stay in their designated timeframe of business hours. They're in the village, and we're a community, and I'd love to work with them and come up with a resolution, but I, the 3:00, 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. deliveries are just too much, and it's been ongoing for years, and I just would like it to stop. So I'm hoping that everyone can kind of stand with us. We are one. I want to, I want to be, you know, a team here. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Natalie. The next one is Mindy Farten.
Good evening, Mindy Farten, 190 Little Plains Road. I'm here to talk about the veterans because I hear you, I heard you last, I hear you all the time and everybody, how wonderful and grateful we are to the veterans. But that Agawam Park memorial is really embarrassing, and we see that little red thermometer hasn't moved. I'm hoping you have some kind of special funds to use or, you know, discretion or whatever, or put out another plea, because I feel it's so disrespectful, especially we've got people coming over from England, you know? So I hope to hear more about how we're going to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy, very much.
Thank you, Mindy. Next is Cynthia Russo.
I'm going to hold up.
Next is Mrs. Byrne.
I'll wait.
You'll wait as well? And then that concludes the public comment. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak for public comment? Okay. When you arrive to the podium, just speak your name and address, sir. Thank you.
Jerry Bytel, 51 Hetty Creek Lane, Southampton. Been a resident for 33 years, or we've owned the home for 33 years, been a full-time resident for the last eight years, seven or eight years. I want to remind the board and the mayor, you started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the republic, the democratic republic, and I'm here to voice my incredible, you know, disappointment that you would even consider extending your terms. Six months ago, five months ago, you were elected to two-year terms. We don't decide, you know, that we're just going to serve longer, and I use the word "serve," which you should be doing. You have to put this to a vote. You must let the people decide. We elected you. We elected you, and I voted for most of you, for two-year terms. Not, maybe you'll change your mind. This is not Russia, this is not Turkey. You cannot do this to this community. And if you proceed to do it, you will be forever, forever known for the shameless grab, power grab that you have done. So if we walk out of this meeting tonight, and the next thing we know is we're hearing about you've unanimously passed, you know, this measure, you know, God help you.
His comments are down now, which is an official part of the public record. Sorry. So from now on, if anybody is going to speak on a public, that's a subject of a public hearing, if you want your comments recorded during the public hearing, you need to speak during that portion of the meeting. So anybody else who wants to talk about the terms of office should speak during the public hearing, not during the public comment period. That's all.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak?
Jay Fitzpatrick, Elm Street. Thank you all for your service. As far as Pond Lane and Agawam, Lake Agawam are concerned, I believe we don't need an 11-acre flower garden. A park would be fine, especially if we could finally get the Fibrous Conser Homestead moving forward and opened. Together, that would be great. Additionally, we don't need to close Pond Lane, but if we need to increase the lake buffer, we can rebuild Pond Lane a bit further west into the Greenbelt with an eco-friendly white top instead of the petroleum-based asphalt black top. All Europe is using white top, no more black top. Also, we have to consider the effects of 11-acre flower garden requiring massive daily hydration, pesticides, and fertilization, which before reaching the purifying aquifier, aqua filter, which is further down, will by, just by gravity, will flow all of the groundwater under the land and the buffer and go right into the lake. And do we really need more traffic downhill street? Speaking of traffic, the Express Sessions had a innovative traffic solution forum last week, and very few innovative traffic solutions were presented or considered. Though not discussed at the forum, one local elected official was pushing for more Long Island Railroad wood and steel track and more nitric oxide, NOx carcinogen-spewing diesel locomotives to help solve our traffic problem. That's sad. Also sad is the three decision-makers and policymakers on the panel, Malone, Fleming, and Snyderman are now out of a job. So it's kind of a meeting worthless. For the next five years at least, it's going to be more cones, blinking lights, zipper lanes, shortcuts through the village, and more police mitigating Southampton's traffic woes. So we might want to budget accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sage, if you want, you can bring in Mrs. Viper.
Hello?
Sheila, I think we can hear you.
Great. I think, though, I just heard, it was hard for me to hear, but I do want to speak to the subject of term limits, and I understand I'm not allowed to speak to that now. So I will thank you for allowing those of us who cannot get to meetings to be here on Zoom. I do very strongly think that the concept of term limits should go to ballot. It's been raised before in the village, as all of us know, and it has always been voted on. Most of the villages on the east end, or not just the east end, I think I read in the paper, all of Long Island have two-year terms.
That's true.
And therefore, I find it astonishing that this board is going to just extend their terms without any kind of public participation in the decision, when they've all pledged to be transparent and responsive. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Go ahead, Sage.
Yeah, I do.
You're on, Bonnie.
Oh, okay. So just so that I have the correct protocol, I am here to comment on a term limit.
That should be done during the public hearing, just so that you're a part of the public record. So we'll bring you back in when we start that public hearing. You will be given a chance to speak. That way, you're part of the public record on the hearing, okay?
Okay. And when will that be starting?
A few, I don't know, when we get to it. I think it's number three on the public hearings.
Yeah, I mean, we could, actually, if you, if we want, I can, I can move that.
No, we have Nelson Pope here.
Yeah, okay, we have Nelson Pope. All right. All right. Bonnie, just stand by, and we have, we have to have Nelson Pope and Voorhees come in now to talk about a zoning law change.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Sage, do you have NPV on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to introduce the local law?
Oh, wait. I just want to be clear. Everyone, we're done with public comment? Okay. So at this time, we'll proceed with public hearing number one. Mayor Menger, do you want to?
So I'll make a motion to open this public hearing on Local Law 17 of 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So Kathy from NPV, the floor is yours. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Taylor Garner, who's here, as well as John Ellsworth. And Taylor Garner is going to proceed with some slides, and she can have control, if that's possible.
Sure. Sage?
Okay.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
Shameless. I love shameless.
Love when it happens like that. Thank you, everyone, for having us. As Kathy mentioned, my name's Taylor, and we are going to be talking about the proposed rezoning of a segment of Meadow Lane that's currently in the R-80 district into the R-120 Kathy introduced us all, but here are our names again. We have Kathy Eismann, myself, Taylor Garner, and John Ellsworth from NPV here. Going to start off with just a little bit of history of how this proposed rezoning came into place. So I'm sure as many of you know, in 2022, the village adopted an update to their comprehensive plan. Within that plan, a potential issue was identified relating to the potential for subdivisions on Meadow Lane that needed further analysis. The comp plan recommended that the village board consider rezoning this area from R-80 to R-120. However, one other recommendation was that any existing lots in that area should be grandfathered in so they wouldn't be overly burdened by any potential rezoning. So the comprehensive plan raised this issue, but noted that it needed further study, which is what led into our next planning analysis. This is the Meadow Lane Planning Study. It was completed in August of this past year, and the intent of this was to further examine the comp plan's recommendations for this rezoning. It's intended to provide a technical basis for the village board to consider when thinking about this proposal. The main components of the analysis were studying the environmental resources of this particular section of Meadow Lane, reviewing the zoning code, and looking at the potential for subdivisions. So just to put the conclusion right out there in the front, the study found that the comprehensive plan's recommendation was well-grounded due to the high degree of environmental sensitivity of the area, and that it would be appropriate to have enhanced protection for this portion of the village, which we will get into further as we go through the environmental resource So here we have our study area. This is the specific segment of Meadow Lane that is currently zoned R-80, the area mostly west of Halsey Neck Lane, with a slight exception right over here. And then as we compare this to the existing zoning map, you'll see, so the sensitive area on the Barrier Beach is R-80, while most of the rest of the waterfront on the village is already within the R-120 district. So this proposed action would be to rezone this area and make it consistent with most of the rest of the waterfront. We've mentioned the environmental resources of it, but I just want to show you some maps. So nearly all of the rezoning area is within a FEMA flood zone. As you can see here, there are some little pockets that aren't in the flood zone on the south side of Meadow Lane, but nearly all of it is within a flood zone. Next, we have wetlands. And again, a significant portion of this area of Meadow Lane is either within an NWI wetland, which is the National Wetlands Inventory, or the New York State DEC Title Wetlands, mostly on the north side of Meadow Lane. And as you can see, the figures are split into two, just so we can zoom in more. So we start on the west end over here, travel east as you move right across the screen, and then the bottom picture picks up and continues traveling east. Next, we have the coastal erosion hazard areas. So that is this dotted line right here, running along the south side of Meadow Lane. So everything south of this line is within the coastal erosion hazard area, which basically just means that this area is susceptible to erosion and increases the environmental sensitivity of this area. And then just to explain a little bit about what it would mean to rezone these parcels from R-80 to R-120. As you can see here, there are not too many differences between these two districts. In fact, the only district, the only difference is the minimum required lot size. The R-80 requires a minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet, while the R-120 requires 120,000 square feet. They have the same permitted special exception and prohibited land uses. They have the same minimum lot width and the same dimensional parameters in terms of height of buildings, you know, front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks, lot coverage. All of those are the same. So the main difference is really just the lot size, and by making this zoning change, it would reduce the potential for subdivisions of this very sensitive area in the village. And then just to finish up, this is a little timeline of what has happened so far to support this initiative and what is remaining. So we had the comprehensive plan recommendation from September of 2022, followed by the planning study in August of 2023. For the past two months, the village has been drafting the local law that would amend the zoning map to change this area from R-80 to R-120, with the provision written in about grandfathering existing lots so they're not overly burdened. The required state environmental quality review process was started. The action was considered a type-one action. So a full environmental assessment form was completed, and that consists of parts one, two, and three. The proposed action has been referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission for their input. They haven't gotten back to us yet, but they have a window to reply. That brings us to today. Here we are at the public hearing. And then the next steps will be to complete the secret process through the adoption of a negative declaration, which indicates that no adverse environmental impacts would be anticipated from this rezoning, and that is because the rezoning would reduce the potential for additional residential subdivisions in the area. After hearing from everyone, if there's no more comments, the board could choose to close the public hearing tonight. We will have to receive the Suffolk County Planning Commission's determination, and then finally, the board will be able to vote on the local law.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is there anyone here in the, hello, Judge? Anyone in the public that would like to be heard on this public hearing?
I had a question that I could ask before the court starts.
Trustee Stevenson.
How is the lot dimensions calculated? Does it go down to the, to the water, to the, to the high-water mark, or is it to the top of the dunes? Or where, where are we talking here to get the 120,000 square feet?
I believe the definition of minimum lot area does not exclude those types of environmental resources in the village code currently. So when we did the analysis, you know, we had to use GIS data, which is not perfectly accurate, but it is pretty close. You know, for any subdivision, they would need to have their own survey completed, but it really just is the total, total area of the lot.
I only ask that question...
With one, with one exception, is that surface waters are excluded from the area. That was the one, one item.
I only ask that question because concerning the massive houses being built on lots, one of the issues is that we, we do regulate the percentage of coverage of the, of the lot area, and if you then include the beach down to the water, which of course could never be built upon, that allows very, very large houses to be built on fairly small pieces of, of actual buildable ground. And I'm wondering if this change takes that into consideration at all, or if that should be considered as part of a overall code revision?
Well, one, one comment is that the overall lot coverage is still going to be 30% of the lot area. So if the lot area is increased, that gives you that much more flexibility there with area of the lot that isn't built on. As far as a maximum building house size, I have to remember, do you have a maximum building size?
The maximum building house size in the village is 18,000 square feet.
That's quite large.
Yes.
Okay.
But, but, but anyway, this, this will have the effect of requiring larger lots and preventing additional subdivision on Meadow Lane, which I think is a positive.
I think those are admirable goals. I just think we need to look at, maybe another code, looking at the code in general to bring back that if we don't count the, the sand as part of a buildable lot.
Right. This, the, it does, in this calculation, go down to the mean high-water mark. Understand that, but that can be, Trustee Stevenson, again, I think, a further study. But at this point, I think this is a good first step to, again, try and preclude further subdivision on Meadow Lane and make sure that the lots are, are... subdivision on, on Meadow Lane and, and make sure that the lots are, are consistent with the rest of the majority of the oceanfront in the, in the village.
Agreed.
Especially on a very sensitive barrier beach, which Meadow Lane is. Any questions or comments from the, the public? Did, did Mark Schifert? Okay, sorry. I thought you wanted to say something. And please introduce yourself.
Yeah. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Shepherd. I'm the co-chair of the Village Planning Commission, and I'd like to address the board this evening about this proposing a rezoning of the western section of Meadow Lane and to show our support for this proposal. Lots along the oceanfronts are very often very deep lots that go into, with the property line go into the water. And in the village of Southampton, as Roy Stevenson mentioned, when you calculate the lot coverage, we do go all the way to the high watermark. In other jurisdiction, you only take into consideration, you only go up to the crest of dunes or the high hazard line. In the case of Southampton, in the village of Southampton, we allow slightly bigger houses. So there is, and because of this, the houses are very large, and they do require the larger lots. And we want, what we are also trying to avoid is to have, to get into a situation like even West Hampton Beach on Dune Road, where you see a series of sliver lots because they have been subdivided, subdivided, resubdivided because of the zoning. So this proposal to increase the requirement for the, of the lot size on the waterfront is really in, very much in line with preserving the character of the area, character of our village. So I urge everybody to support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this, on this local law? Anyone? Okay. Any other trustees have comments? All right. Then I'll make a motion to close this public hearing on Local Law seventeen of 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to the next one. Local Law eighteen, the proposal to amend Section ninety-three-eleven of the village code fee for services. I'm going to turn this over to the village attorney for an explanation of this.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to open this public hearing.
Open, I mean, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is actually just a proposal to change one fee, and that's the SWIP fee. It was, it's the fee, a review fee. So when someone presents an application to the planning board, we refer it out, bring in an expert to review it for the village. In the past, the fee was six hundred and fifty dollars, but we are spending upwards of two thousand dollars to pay for that review. So this simply passes the cost, raises the fee to pass the appropriate cost on to the person seeking the review from the village. That's all. So it goes from six fifty to two thousand based on the actual cost to the village, or the estimated actual cost to the village.
Thank you, Eileen. I see that the, the building inspector is here, Tin Hoseau. Tin, you brought this to our attention. Do you have any comments on this?
No, it's really an acronym.
Okay. Thank you. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this, on this increase on the fee for the, it's really a stormwater fee that, that is levied on applicants when they have, was it over an acre of land?
Exactly.
In the village?
For the, right.
Anybody going once? Okay. Then with, any comments from trustees?
Yep.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to close this public hearing on that local law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next local law, number nineteen of 2023. The proposal to add Chapter eleven to the village code of Southampton Village, amending the terms of office. I think there are going to be a few people who want to talk. So I will make a motion to open the public hearing for this change of the code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Maybe I will first defer to the village attorney to explain this. Thank you.
Okay. So first, I think I should say what this law does not do, based on some of the, one of the comments I've heard tonight so far and what I've seen on social media, that this law does nothing to extend the current terms of the board members. So the current terms of everybody sitting on the board remains the same. This, this law only affects terms going forward. The law is designed to, starting with the next election, will start the process of changing the terms to four years. So for every person on the board, after, once the, the law is fully enacted, they'd only run for office once every four years. We would only have an election every two years instead of every single year the way we do now. Since we need to stagger the terms of office, those people who are up, those offices up for election in 2024 would be given a term of three years. Those up in 2025 would get a four-year term. That way, the people in twenty, that are elected in 2024 would run again in 2027, or new people would run in 2027, and then from then on, we would have our elections in odd years every two years. So this wouldn't affect anybody, any current term. That would not be appropriate and would be illegal, too, but it would affect all the terms going forward, forward. I just want to also note that the, the board could have done this by resolution. New York State village law allows a village board to change the terms of office by simply passing a resolution. The board here, they, they also have the option under village law to hold a public hearing. This board opted to have a public hearing so that they could get input from members of the public. Whether they did it by resolution or by public hearing, it would be subject to a permissive referendum, and that, if you read the entirety of the proposed local law, there's language in there, it wouldn't become effective until thirty days after the adoption of the law so that there's the opportunity for members of the public to request a permissive referendum. What's a permissive referendum? I also want to say on the policy side of this, I think first, first of all, and some of this is written into the, some of the intent language of the law, but public officials are elected to represent you, to exercise their best judgment, and then ultimately be held accountable by you for results. But results take time. Two years is a very short period of time for anybody to achieve results. So the longer terms, they assure a small degree of independence from day-to-day pressure while they, while they attempt to achieve whatever goal it is that you elected them to do. So also, it provides more stability within village halls, stability of leadership within village hall. And then finally, obviously, there's a cost-saving elections. I don't know, I mean, if you've read about it in the papers, elections are becoming more expensive, given the new technology. So having elections every two years would also save some money there. And so then finally, I want to point out again, because it's been raised, that contrary to some of the public commentary, there is simply no authority for a local legislative body like a village board to determine for itself whether to submit a local law to a public referendum. The power of the board to enact local laws is derived from the New York State Constitution and from the New York State Home Rule laws. So the New York State Home Rule laws, both the Constitution and the Home Rule laws, they determine what is subject to a mandatory referendum or a permissive referendum. The, the, there is no authority in New York State. We don't have initiatives. We don't let the public, we're one of the, I think there's twenty-nine or thirty states in the country that operate like we do. We do not allow the public to bring initiatives. Now, this might be different in some of the cities under New York State city law, but in county, town, village law, we do not allow the public to do that. That has nothing to do with this board. It's a decision made when they adopted the New York State Constitution and also New York State municipal home rule law. So, so there is a, there is a mechanism for voters, if enough voters within the village want a referendum on it, there is a mechanism for requesting a permissive referendum. But this board has no authority to put this up to a public vote. This is a representative government, and that's the form of government we have in New York State. So I'm happy to answer questions, too, but anything else?
Any, any questions from any of the board members?
No.
Okay. So members of the public, who would like to be heard? Mark Schifert? You like to speak a lot, it seems like, Mark.
Thank you, and good evening again. My name is Mark Shepherd. I'm the co-chair of the Village Planning Commission, and I'd like to address again this board tonight about the proposed change in the terms, benefits, and compensation. This issue came about in the last few years. It was brought up to the Planning Commission, which operates under Chapter twenty of the village code, and we had received at the Planning Commission a number of complaints and about having elections every year and also having the board of trustees change every year. As a matter of fact, when Charlene Kegel Betts, our previous village administrator, when she was only three years into her job, she had gone through three different board of trustees, because we had elections every year, and every year it changed, and it takes a while to, to adapt. So at that point, with the blessing of, at that point, Mayor Jesse Warren and the board, we asked the, the board of trustees to study the issue, and we created a task force. And the task force was composed of two members of the Planning Commission, Pamela Gilmar and myself, and we got three village residents to participate in the task force. It was Walter Dean, Bob Lowman, and Susan Steinhardt. And I again thank them very much for their, for their efforts. And we, after various meetings and studies, we, consensus was reached that good governance to have elections every year and change the board of trustees every year was not good governance. We thought that, and there was a consensus to then adopt a very similar terms than the town. As a matter of fact, almost an image to the town. At the town, the supervisor is elected for a term of two years, and they have four councilmen, and the four councilmen are elected for council persons. So they are elected for four-year terms, and they are staggered, so you get elections every two years. So Schneiderman was there for, and they have a term limit, I think, for four, four term, two terms, four terms for the supervisor and two terms for the, the council person. So they are there for a maximum of eight years.
Isn't there, you never have many terms. It just seems like we're not involved.
Sorry?
This is public hearing, not public comment.
Public hearing is different.
No, I just want to, I think it's important to understand the background of how it came about and what is being proposed, because in fact, on the comments that I heard, so what we are, what was proposed by this task force was very much an image of what is at the town, meaning that the mayor for a term, a two-year term, and the trustees, or just like the council persons, for a four-year term. So we would have elections every two years. And we thought it was, at the same time, the task force also studied the compensation of the mayor and the trustees. And the trust, the mayor's salary was twenty-five thousand dollars, and the trustees fifteen thousand dollars, which really are very low numbers considering what they have to do and also considering that we are a very small village. In a large town like the town of Southampton, there's a lot of supervision, a lot of layers. Whereas here, the role of the trustees to supervise the department is essential. We are, so we really very much depend on trustees. So the task force, we thought that an increase, and there had been no increase in many, many years, so we thought that an increase of five thousand dollars on each of them was a reasonable increase, and it's very much along the line that what is being proposed tonight. So I think that the, and as the judge, Eileen Powers, mentioned, this is not to be applied to this administration. It will only be applied after, for the next terms that come on the election. So on the Planning Commission here, we wholly support the change that's being proposed, and you know, we welcome the public hearing, we welcome any modifications or changes, but we think that good governance to have terms of, to have elections every two years is much better and good governance. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. So going forward, regard, I have a list of the folks that want to speak. So the first one is Mr. David Rung.
David Rung, eighty-five Pleasant Lane. It's the first time I've heard I'm not limited to three minutes, so we're going to be here a while. If this administration even had a modicum of respect for the residents of this village, they would authorize a non-petition referendum to allow the residents to decide both the change of terms and the outlandishly expensive mayor and trustee compensation rules. Now, we've just heard from the attorney that we can't have the referendum, but you could authorize a preference survey, and you could agree to be bound by the results of that preference survey, because what you're doing is entirely ignoring what, what the, the views of, of the residents of this village. Note also that this village commissioned a survey of elected village officials' terms of office, compensation, and health insurance plan participation, which by the way, the planning committee must have never had a copy of, because it has entirely opposite results of what you just heard from the planning commission.
If anyone needs a copy, I've got it right here.
By the way, anybody who wants a copy of this, so you can see it for yourself, you can get it from the village clerk, or give me your email address and I will send it to you. But note that this survey has, that the overwhelming number of the respondents are on two-year terms, right? So this board is just choosing to ignore the survey it commissioned. Now, concerning, concerning the compensation proposals, right now, the mayor's compensation is about the same as the East Hampton and Sag Harbor mayor's compensation. But with the proposed raise in this proposal, the Southampton Village mayor would be paid thirty-five percent more than the other mayors. Presently, the trustees are already paid more than the East Hampton and Sag Harbor trustees. With the proposed raise, they will be paid fifty percent more than the East Hampton and Sag Harbor trustees. How is this fair to Southampton taxpayers? The survey, oh, oh, let me see what I want to say next. This proposal provides that in relation to the current healthcare benefits for the mayor and the trustees, that they would start making contributions towards their healthcare premiums. However, notice that they slipped in a little proposal that limits the contributions to a percent of their base compensation. This reduces their contribution to a very small amount and therefore, again, makes the village taxpayers pay the preponderance of the rest of the cost. This provision may make sense for full-time employees, but it makes no sense for part-time employees. Now on to post-retirement healthcare benefits. The survey noted that the vast majority of the respondents do not provide post, post-retirement, or post-employment healthcare benefits. And if they do, they require significant contributions, or they offer that if the individuals have outside healthcare, that they should be using that and not the plan. Note that in the last election, this was an issue, and the other candidates in, in that election all vowed to eliminate post-retirement, post-employment healthcare retirement benefits for the mayor and the trustees. And this, this provision, by the way, costs village taxpayers millions of dollars, because you're committing to something that will go on for thirty or forty years. It's hugely expensive to the taxpayers. But of course, this administration always chooses its own greed over the taxpayer's interests and refuses to eliminate these benefits. But don't worry about not having candidates if these outlandish proposals are not acted on. Palmer Hudson and Greg would happily serve. I would serve without any compensation. Other individuals like Kimberly Allen and Nancy McGann actually care about others. They would be good representatives. This administration needs to be on a short leash. Do not extend the terms.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David.
So we've conflated these issues a little bit. This is a public hearing on the terms of, the lengths of the terms of office, but since it appears everyone wants to talk about the second resolution also at this time, I just want to explain the current policy. I'm not sure it sounded correct from Mr. Rung, I'm not sure exactly what you intended, but the current policy for elected board members, and it's my understanding, I'm brand-new to the village, but it's my understanding, it's been the long-term policy here, is that elected officials during their term of service receive full health benefits at no cost to them. So there are no contributions to it, so nobody's sneaking anything in. This is, this entire resolution is about improving that for the residents of the village. So in addition, the currently, the policy currently provides that out-of-service elected officials would receive lifetime health benefits, that's the current policy, after only five years of service. And that would include, for example, a mayor who was in his 40s, or a board member who was in their 40s. Up until, currently, they would still be eligible for lifetime benefits under the existing policy. So this is an effort by the board to change that. So again, this resolution is not something that's generally adopted in the middle of somebody's term. It would need the consent of all of the board members, so that's what we have here. All of the board members have agreed to reduce their health benefits in the middle of their term. Right now, they have free health benefits. Now, starting in January, if they adopt this proposal, they'll have, they'll have to pay for their health benefits or contribute to it. So, and the effort was made to make it more consistent with, to make it consistent with what the department heads have. In addition, just so we're clear about what the policy is going to change to, you would need a minimum, this board would, because we're changing it midterm, after they've already been elected, they would need a minimum of eight years. Thereafter, anybody else elected to the board would need a minimum of 10 years of service before they became eligible. But they also wouldn't be eligible unless they had reached the age of 62 before they were out of service. So, and 62, so you know, is the age, under the New York State local retirement system, where an official would be eligible to retire without any penalty. So that's the full retirement age under the New York State local retirement system, so that's where that age comes from. And obviously, the cost, once you're on Medicare, is at 68, 65, the cost to the village is significantly less for any of those healthcare benefits. Again, second, this resolution does also include an increase in the salary. However, these current salaries, the board member salaries haven't been changed or increased since 2006. The, I'm sorry?
2007.
Maybe it was 2007, you might be correct, I'm sorry. They haven't, they haven't been increased since then. This is, the increase that's planned here is essentially a cost-of-living adjustment. So that's where the increase in the number comes from. The number, as it existed in 2007, and then with the cost-of-living adjustment, the new number is what we came up with. So it's not an actual wage increase, it's a cost-of-living adjustment to bring it more into line with what was intended.
Eileen, there was also one other component you left out.
Okay, what's that?
And that is, again, after-
Oh, right, out-of-service, out-of-service elected officials who are eligible for the health benefit, that means they're over 62, and they have eight or 10 years of service with the village, they would have to contribute during the time they're out of service, at the same level that a department head would, which is at 30%. So that is another change.
Correct, thank you. Because at this point, the contribution for retired board members is zero.
Right.
So this is all moving in a positive direction for the taxpayer, and everybody has to realize that we are trying to do the right thing, and we have addressed this in my four, four months in office, and no previous administration has ever addressed this. So I want it to be very clear that this administration has taken this on, and is doing something in four months, something that no previous administration has ever done, just to make it very clear. Thank you. Any members of the other public that would like to hear on, speak on this? Christine Whitaker, please, come forward.
I'm sorry, no, standby.
Oh, sorry.
The next one is Jessica Mezakappa.
Christine, I can log in.
Yes, you do. Sorry, Jessica.
It's okay. Just two quick things.
Hi, Jessica Mezakappa, 136 Hedy Creek Lane. I just want to make a comment about the term lengths. It is exhausting for the village to have an election every single year. I think people would be more engaged, and it's, I'm all for the four-year terms. I just have two, am I allowed to ask questions? No. Okay. I know what that means. I just want to say, Bill, as part of your campaign promises, you spoke about waiving your right to the healthcare benefit or stipend, is, you know, I just want to-
Yes, until we came up with a new policy.
Okay.
That's correct. That, no, that's exactly what was-
Very interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
And Roy, you made a comment to someone that after age of 65, it would be Medicare coverage, which is significantly less expensive. I don't see that language in the actual-
No, once you become 65, you only get Medicare. That's correct.
Okay.
That's exactly the way it works.
That should be added into the actual language, because healthcare costs-
That's the policy of the village.
No, no, yeah, but it's not that you don't, it serves as a supplemental plan, the village plan, so it's a lot less costly, but there is a-
But they are required to take the Medicare.
Right. When you're retired like that, you are.
Yes, that's correct.
This is just a supplemental plan.
Great, thank you very much.
That's correct.
Yes.
Wait, wait, you have to step up. I'm sorry, Nancy. No, you have to, Nancy.
Well, you should go in order of-
No, no, no. I'm so sorry. I stand by everyone. The next person for public hearing number three is Valerie Acera. Mrs. McGann, I'll add you to the list.
I'll add you.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome, Nancy.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Valerie Acera. I live at 10 Leland Lane. I've lived in Southampton Village for over 50 years. I speak in reference to the proposed resolution to change the term of office for the mayor, assistant mayor, and trustees. While it's lawful for the village Board of Trustees to pass a resolution to increase the terms from two to four years, to do so poses what I believe is a glaring appearance of impropriety and self-dealing. The decision regarding the terms of elected officials, whether one, two, three, four years, is one that should remain with the voters who elect the officials. Moreover, the village Board of Trustees proposes that the resolution be passed by permissive referendum. Now, as I understand it, this means the mayor, assistant mayor, and trustees pass the resolution and post the notice. The burden, well, you'll explain when I'm done, and I'll be grateful for that. Okay? The, this means the mayor, assistant mayor, and trustee pass the resolution post-notice. The petition is not, the burden is then, as I understand it, on the village residents to file a petition within 30 days to require that the resolution be brought to vote at an election. If the petition is not filed correctly and in time, the resolution becomes law without the vote of qualified village voters. The petition must include the signatures of 20% of village voters. And I'm, I don't know what the current voter roll is, I'm guessing that's somewhere between 700 and 900 folks, that would have to get signatures within such a short timeframe. Hopefully, tonight, the village clerk, Ms. Sweeney, can clarify the actual number of signatures needed. The village Board of Trustees has proposed the resolution now, in late fall, when it gets dark early and there's less folks around. In order to get enough signatures for a petition, village residents would have the burden of going door-to-door within just a few weeks, during a time when COVID still looms and folks are preparing for their upcoming holidays. To place this burden and risk on residents in order for them to exercise their rights is lawful, but it too poses a glaring appearance of impropriety and self-dealing on the part of the village Board of Trustees. I implore you to do the right thing. Refrain from passing this resolution by permissive referendum. Instead, place a resolution or a legal and appropriate amendment for term limits on a ballot at election, so voters get to have a say. Thank you very much. And any clarification?
The local law is subject to a permissive referendum. There's no onus on the village board to do anything, there's nothing they can do. It's a permissive referendum, and it's to be brought by, you know, the qualified electors of the village if they so choose. There's no way for the board to put it up for a referendum on their own. So I don't want to debate the law with you. That's our position.
I don't understand. I read the resolution-
It's okay, you can consult with a lawyer and see what they say.
That Ms. Sweeney sends, that's not down to-
Well, you can, I, there's nothing I can do.
Please, we're here to understand. We really want to understand how it works. The bottom line is the voters want to say in what the term of their elected officials are. And it seems, from what I've read, and the resolution, which Ms. Sweeney was so kind to send to me, it doesn't seem like we have a say. So it's not an argument, and I'm not going to consult an attorney, because I think you're my attorney, too.
I'm actually not, but yeah, that's the problem.
Because, you know, you're the village, yeah, well, that's a problem then. But help us.
Can I ask you a question? I was asked a question by the previous person. You say it's self-dealing, but how is it self-dealing when it doesn't affect our terms? If the next election, vote for new people if you don't want these people. I mean, pick somebody else.
Yeah, but still, it's setting a precedent, you're taking, you are taking what our power, the power of the taxpayer and the voters, and you're appropriating it to a body of five people.
We are a representative democracy. We were elected by the voters, lots of them, to make decisions.
Something as significant, something as significant as term limits needs to go to vote of the public.
But you understand from the attorney that that cannot happen. We cannot make it a referendum.
They can't do it, but the voters can. But there has to be a way to, if the term limits, okay.
Voters can do it. It's not a term limit, it's a term of office, just because that's a crucial distinction. Okay?
So, if the voters can do it, however, whether it's one year, two years, three years, four years, whatever vehicle there is for that decision to be made by the voters of this village, that vehicle should be sought after, and that should be the way that this proposal does. I am not here to say whether it should be one year, two years, three years, 10 years. I'm here to say that unless the power, however it can be done-
It's not.
-is given to the public to make that decision, then it's inappropriate.
Okay. The New York State Constitution and New York State village law and the New York State home rule law has set this up, that we have no control over it, it wouldn't matter if it was one year, or two years, or four years, or 10 years. There is no mechanism for a local legislative body to submit this to a referendum. There is, however, a permissive referendum. We adopt the law, we cannot put it into effect for a minimum of 30 days to allow the voters to subject it to a permissive referendum. You get, plenty of places do it, plenty of people do it.
But listen, I just said to you, 30 days now-
I didn't set the 30 days, nobody set the days.
I know, but, and then what I would say, that if this isn't in the Constitution, or the terms in the New York State Constitution, you cannot tell me there is not a legal way to amend the restrictions, and you can't-
There is a permissive referendum.
If in fact, there is a permissive referendum that only gives the taxpayers 30 days to gather between 700 and 900 signatures in the dark winter months when COVID is looming is not correct. Maybe table it, put it back in the summer, when there's a lot of people here, and when we can be outside and getting the signatures.
All right, ma'am, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jay Fitzpatrick again, I'll be short. When you all ran for election, the village residents took your measure. You promised to uphold village code and preserve the quality of life in the village, among other promises. We listened, we trusted, and we voted for you. I have voted for all of you at one time or another, except for trustees and others, who is new to the board. And I trust you will never take that for granted, but instead give me and the village residents every reason to continue to support you. Health benefits and pay increases while you're serving seem to me more than fair, and hopefully will entice other varied applicants who will be able to perform all the hard work and overtime you guys all put in, but with a fair compensation. As an alternate to the four-year term, I respectfully suggest you consider a three-year term, but with a term limit of two consecutive runs. That would give each Board of Trustee member at least six years consecutively without campaigning, and open up opportunities for new members and new ideas. Of course, I believe in having a village vote on any change in the benefits or term considerations as a very good transparent thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jay.
Next person is Don King.
Is it Don King? Don's here.
I reside at 36 Scoop Street. I appreciate the time that all of you put in, because I've spent enough time in a chair similar to yours. And there are hard topics at some point, and this is a difficult topic. Please remember, government closest to the people, we have to be able to change it in a year, not two years. We need to be able to have a say. And this is, this is my village, I've been here all my life, and to see this happen, this is, this will be the third time. This happened when I came home from college, and Roy Wines, I think, was the mayor, put it up, it went down. It was a permissive referendum. It came up, I think, with Mr. Hatrick in that time period, and it went down overwhelmingly. So I, I had to ask you, and I think the board can, set a permissive referendum. And I think, you know, if you're attorney, I would ask you to go to the State Attorney General and get a ruling. Really, because this is important, so I'm, I didn't, I thought I'd be the only one in the room. But to come here and to see the number of people that are really concerned about this, if you take action on this tonight, it's wrong. It really is. It's the only time I've ever wrote a letter to the paper about the village board, both of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next resident is Rob Davini.
Evening, I'm Rob Davini, 40 High Street. My first comment has to do with the propriety of the village attorney politicizing in favor of the board's wishes. I'm not sure that's your role. Not your role.
I'm not politicizing.
It is not your role, you were speaking about the joys of increased term limits.
The law has a legislative intent in it, that's what I'm explaining.
I'm not talking about the law, I'm saying, you say government works better with longer term limits.
The legislative intent that's contained in the law says that, that's, I was explaining the law, not offering my own personal opinion.
Is it possible that shorter term limits can get rid of people who are not competent? Right. Secondly, I am looking at the report from the Terms and Compensation Task Force, which Mr. Schiffer headed up. This is dated February 2nd, 2023. You spoke, I think, about the overwhelming urge for longer term limits, and I'm reading here, verbatim, "No consensus could be reached within the task force for either-" either two or four years for the mayor." There it is. And incidentally, there were other measures that were addressed. Number 10 and 11, "The mayor and trustees will receive medical health benefits for themselves only and only while in office. There will be no more vesting into the village healthcare benefit plan for life. The five-year vesting period will be terminated." That was ignored. That was said, "We'll have to study this." Well, you have a planning commission, they studied it. No good. So in my head, cynic that I am, I'm saying, okay, they're going to play the clock out till after the election. And they did. And they found a committee, a consultation group, to look at the issues, who also said that we were outliers. We were ridiculously generous and had lifetime benefits. We have, God forbid, we ever get, we had a 28-year-old or whatever he was last year running, and he didn't win. Thank God, or we'd be getting medical benefits for 60 years. We can't tolerate any youth over here. So, hi, the outside consultants, they were largely, largely ignored as well. It seemed to me that first, you would take care of the benefit situation before you would extend the limits. That seemed to be the natural progression to me. But no, that's not so. So I, and I do think, as others have voiced, that your actions have really been disdainful of your constituents. And I think it's been shameful, really. But on positive side, your actions have really formed the perfect argument for limiting term limits. Thank you.
Our next resident is Mindy Fortin.
Oh, Bonnie Cannon?
Yeah.
Sure, that's a good idea. Thank you, Mindy. Sheila?
Yes.
You're on.
Okay, sorry, I thought it was going to be Mindy.
No, I know, no, Mindy said she wanted to let those on Zoom go ahead.
Okay, well, I just wanted to repeat my comment, I suppose, from before so that it's part of the public record. I was very appreciative of Mr. Schiffer giving us a summary of what the planning commission had done. I do try to read the press every week. I never saw anything about this before. And it's entirely possible I missed it, I admit that, but I think a large portion of the public may not know about a lot of these deliberations that have gone on. And to have this measure be passed tonight would definitely, I think, repeating a phrase from before, have the appearance of impropriety. I think that you're all in danger of really looking like you are not responsive to the public by not putting this up for a vote. And if it's true that it really can't be put up on the ballot, just put on the ballot and it has to be a permissive referendum. I think that Valerie's points about the time of year when this is happening are very valid. That it's a very difficult time of year for people to have to scurry around when it gets dark at 4:15 to try to collect signatures. So I urge the board to think very strongly about the appearance that they're giving to all of us about whether or not they really care about what the people of the village think. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheila. Bonnie, you're up. Bonnie Cannon.
Okay, I had a question, and I don't know if I can answer on it. Is it, for the permissive referendum, is it 300 signatures or seven? Because I've heard 300, I've heard seven. I thought I read 300.
I believe it's 20% of the qualified elected voters, but you'd have to, we'd have to look that up. I don't think that's accurate, but okay.
I don't think so.
Whatever the number of voters are, I believe it's 20% for a permissive referendum.
And they have to show that they're voters, registered voters in the town? It's not the town?
No, it's the village. Yeah.
We maintain a, there is a village voting, registered voter list, that's what it is.
Well, Bonnie, you have the floor, though, so we can't have discussions when Bonnie has the floor here. Bonnie, please go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I just, basically, I wanted to just comment on the term limits. And I know that, just from, you know, my experience, that, and as Don had said before, that this has come before the village before, a few times, and it has not, it has never passed. And I think that, you know, just listening to the constituents and to the constituents of the village here, that I think that, you know, the term limits shouldn't be, should not be changed. And, you know, I heard what you were saying as far as the cost. I heard the attorney talk about the cost and the time for the, to do an election. And I don't, I guess my question, or my, one of the things that I would like to know is what percentage of the budget does that hit when we do it every year? Is it, because I think that if you actually look at the numbers, it would be probably less than 1% to the cost of the entire budget for us to do an election every year. And I do understand, and this is nothing toward anybody that's sitting on the board right now, I'm just looking at for the future, for our future, and looking at, you know, setting that precedence, that if, you know, if the board is doing a wonderful job, then you'll get reelected, whoever that is. But, you know, this causes, my concern is it causes some concern. If we do have a board, or we have a board that the majority of the village is not happy with, then, you know, we're stuck with a longer term of having them in office. But my, so my concern, that's my concern, not with this board, I'm going to say that again, not with this board. I'm talking about for the future and, you know, setting the future and the history. It's all wonderful when everything is going great and when everything is going well and everybody is happy and things are going well. But it's that time when, you know, things are not going well and the majority of folks see that things are not going well. And I'm just concerned about how we're going to be if that time ever comes and we have these extended term limits. So that's, that's my, that's my, you know, that's my concern and that's why I think, and we've tried to do this before. And I think that, you know, the term limits, you know, just stick with what you have right now. If you look, if you weigh the percentage and look at the percentage cost of doing the elections every year, it's really not that big of a percentage of your entire budget. And I do understand how you're saying that it doesn't help you to continue on with your plans, but I think it's just something that you have to do. And again, not, I understand that the term limit is nothing that would even be affected by this board, that you guys would, you know, would happen after you're out. So again, I just want to make it clear that this is not toward this board at all, but I just think setting a precedent for the future, that we need to, you know, just stick with what it has been. Because it has been done and the answer is that the village, your constituents in the village, they don't, they don't want to have the change to term limits.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you very much, Bonnie. Thank you, Bonnie.
Did you say the number of registered voters? Did you say that before?
I don't have that at this time.
Who was next on the list?
Next one is Mindy.
Mindy Fortin, 190 Little Plains Road. I'd like to welcome you, Ms. Attorney. I feel like...
Thank you.
Part of being in this village is, do you need a cup of sugar or a glass of wine? You know? And I hope we can all get, yeah, a bottle of tequila, whatever. So I think we all need to know that we want what's best for the village. I respectfully ask because before this evening, public comment, whether it was about this or that, was included in the minutes. And maybe we can have a warning, and this will be a warning, or maybe announce it before people speak so that it will be included in the minutes because...
It's included in the minutes, but not in the official record of the public hearing. That's all I was trying to point out.
I don't think I understand the difference, but okay.
Well, there's a legal difference, yeah.
Okay, someone explain it to me later. Anyway, I think a warning is good. All right. The Constitution says, don't worry, this is sure, it's not the Constitution. The Constitution says representatives are chosen every two years because the Constitution felt that frequent elections would urge or allow House members to have more interaction with their constituents and be more responsive to their constituents. And that's why I feel village trustees and the mayor should be, stay at two years. Because four years can lead to less interaction with its constituents and possibly less responsiveness. And in your flyers, which, okay, I'm a hoarder, I've kept all of them. You know, you tell how much you got done in two years. But now you're telling me you can't get anything done in two years. So, you know, I'm not sure which it is. And I think if you stick with the two years, you'll be, and do your job, you'll be elected on those two years, right? I know, I'm just saying. And lastly, two years will allow us voters to trust you and hold you to your pledge, which is in the flyer, to work respectively, diligently, and responsibly, as you have pledged in your mailing, reminding citizens it is our responsibility to make our voices heard and thanking us for voting. And we would like you to just remember that you wrote this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy.
Okay, next is Shawna Byrne.
Hi, I'm Shawna Byrne. I've resided in this village since August 24th of 1998. I never come to these meetings, and that's a whole nother sidebar, which we will not go into tonight. But I think that based on what your public is telling you, that we want two-year terms. Referendum, however we're going to do this, I really think you need to really take stock in what we're saying. Don King came in here and he basically said, this has happened or it's come up three different times, I mean, he's talking about since he came home from college. That's a while.
Don, did you hear that?
I'm being transparent. We're talking about Mr. Hatrick's term. We're talking about, at this point, probably three or four different mayor's terms. So my question is, are you going to listen? Is there, is there a vehicle where this can be, you can listen to what we, as your constituents, are saying?
Thank you, Shawna.
Next is Lee Darcy, 86 West Prospect.
I'm Lee Dance. I live at 86 West Prospect. I've been a resident of the town for 36 years and just three years in the village. I, I feel like the, we came, came out of a board that was very sort of clandestine in the way we heard about what was happening and how we could give input. And things would come about, there was all these back-room politics, the feeling of that during, leading up to the last election. And it's such a surprise to see how quickly the first real actions, to me, of the board have been very self-focused on the board itself and other people in the board. So we're just starting. Change moves really slowly here in the village, definitely in the planning commission, that's for sure. There's lots that we've been seeing. I couldn't believe we were hearing 15-year-old plans when I first heard about that. And compared to many other towns that are doing so much better than the village, I think we should admit, including West Hampton, we have a reason to question and feedback. So to lead out with, I come from a business background, and good governance really these days means constant transparency and also constant response. So it means, and the ability to know that people are using the right means to make good decisions. So so many of us have to have the lawyer, who seems to be very promotional to me, for a lawyer that, I've been at various hearings, and I'm surprised she seems to be promoting a position rather than explaining. That is a little off to me, but because I think she's supposed to be like an arbitrator might be, to just explain and be transparent. We don't get a lot of the details, but what we read really does not look good in terms of terms. I see no reason to go to, I mean, it seems so antiquated to go to a four-year term. It seems like the kind of thing Putin does. You know, you start to think about historic input in response to a community. It just doesn't sound right. And it's, and I just want to just reinforce what others said. I also think the healthcare benefits is just ludicrous in terms of lifelong. You know, anyone, even the CEO of a huge company does not get lifetime healthcare benefits. I don't see why any part-time elected official, you should go into it knowing that it ends when you leave. And whether you say you'll contribute or not, the town, the village is still contributing according to everything I've seen in the, in the explanations. And if I haven't seen that, you're not explaining things well enough. So all I have to say, I also think that, just one last thing, and that is, you could have chosen your timing on changing the term to a time when the town, because you know this has been a controversial issue, if you know anything about the history of this village. So you could have picked a time when the village, people are here and that people could talk with each other about it, and there would be others to talk to. We don't, we've heard different numbers on how many people need to sign this referendum, but 30 days at Thanksgiving, when people are finished doing their work to finish their year-end stuff, is really disrespectful of your voters and your village residents. And you could have picked a different time, and I think you should table it to the spring, late spring.
Thank you.
Next is Christine Whitker.
Christine Whitker, I live on Cameron Street. I just wanted to say that I have a question, and I know you're not allowed to answer, but the planning commission talked about a task force had been formed of three members of the public, and I'm assuming it's the five-member commission, planning commission that was...
No, Mark explained that, actually. But, yeah, go ahead.
No, but the planning commission now is three members, correct?
Five.
Five.
Oh, it's five? What was it, eight? Okay, whatever. In any case, it just seems a surprise to hear, not about the term limits, because I know that was being talked about, but I don't know, like, if there's a task force discussing something as important as, you know, this term thing, is there somewhere that it could be online, who's on the task force for these things, or is that secret?
No, no.
No, in fact, it's on YouTube, the presentations that were made back, I believe it was in April. We had a, we had a few presentations. You have to go and watch each meeting. Somewhere around April, I don't know exactly, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to look to see where it was. But there were a number of discussions in previous... Right, but to watch all these things on YouTube is, you know, if you could just have them online, you know, it's a lot quicker if you had a category of task forces, committee task forces.
Okay, well, Mark, maybe you can, you want to speak to that? Do you want to add that?
Well, I don't mean just the planning commission, but I mean any of these other things.
Planning commission meets every month, on the first Thursday of the month.
I know.
The Planning Commission meets every month on the first Thursday of the month, and everybody's invited to come and attend. And here, I just want to, again, what... Yes, looking to this issue was more to have...
Yeah, Mark, you might have to go to the microphone, please.
Using this one.
One of the motivation of the revision of the terms was really to try to have more involvement in politics, more involvement of the public, and to have a vote every year, what we thought was not good governance, and we thought it was better to have the elections every second year. And this was the main thrust behind this proposal.
So, there were many people that were involved in the... With the task force and the study, and the extra study, actually, that we had commissioned as well. So, was the... And we also weighed in with the Budget and Finance Committee. So, there were many, many people that were involved with this. So, this has been going on since the springtime, early spring.
But it's sort of when there's suddenly a public hearing, you come, but you don't know that what... What... My mask. And what went before. So, I'm just asking if there's anywhere that you can have sort of topics brought up online or something.
Sure, no, we can look into that. Kathy on the website may be...
You know, to go from task force to then recommendations, and then a public hearing, and then a vote, seems like very precipitous. And so, and I also wondered if anybody thought of three-year... So, three-year terms.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you.
Trustees should be shorter, the mayor should have a four-year term and the trustees three.
Okay. Thank you, Christine.
Next resident is Nancy McGann. No? Okay. That is all that I have for public comment for Public Hearing Three.
Can I sign up?
Yes, you may.
Hi, I'm Barbara Wilson, I live on Elm Street in Southampton. I just want to make clear for the record that the town pays for my health insurance. So, I just want to make that clear. I'm not on Medicare yet, or Medicaid, or anything else, thank God. So, I just want to make that clear to the village. I have not cost any of the residents any money for my health insurance. Thank you.
At this time, I do not have any more residents listed.
Sage, do you have anyone on line?
Good evening, everyone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak, Public Hearing Number Three?
Yes, please, Kathy.
I will write your name down.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Jesse Moore.
I know, thank you. I just have to get it on record, because I'm writing his name down. Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right. First, by the way, I wanted to thank Eileen Powers, who's the new village attorney. Before being the village attorney, she was actually one of our hearing officers, and we hired her because you were tough, so... And you did a good job. So, I do know that Eileen does her research and is a good attorney, I will say that. Before I talk about two years versus four years, I did want to clarify that, of course, this morning I did check my handy NICOM handbook, that's the New York Conference of Mayors, and it says in the handbook that additionally pursuant to village law, New York State Law and Villages, Section 9-908, "Where an act or resolution of the board is subject to a permissive referendum, the board may adopt a resolution submitting the act or resolution to referendum, eliminating the need for a petition." So, that is in the NICOM handbook for those to explore. Those could also go online and check out the New York State laws on villages, and it's written there. So, that could be an area for additional clarification. I'll also go and say that, for those who know me, I think they know that my work ethic as mayor and my accessibility was probably second to none. And there's two reasons why I worked so hard. The first reason was because of my love for the village, the people, the environment, and water quality, and trying to improve the village and make it a better place for people. The second reason I worked so hard was because they were two-year terms. And I can tell you that every day that went by, I obviously wanted to help people, but I also found that preparing for an election actually brought me closer to the people. And I learned of all the needs of the village residents during each and every day when I made my phone calls and I reached out and I wrote letters, et cetera. So, I believe that having two-year terms is critical for increased accountability and accessibility, and I could talk about my firsthand experience. Before that, when I was first elected, I went to my unlikely mayor, Rich... Mentor, Deputy Mayor Rich Strzestrowski, and I said, "Rich, do you know we can make four-year terms?" And he said to me, "Don't even think about it. We've been through this many times before. It's self-serving, the village residents don't want it. Drop it and start to think about what you can do to help people." And that was some of the best advice I received from our former Deputy Mayor, Rich Strzestrowski. And, of course, we did drop it and never brought it up again. In fact, I actually fought to make sure we had the two-year terms. I would also like to see the village board introduce term limits, so that no one person could be a trustee or mayor forever. It's critical in any type of local environment that we have these term limits. And then I would like the village board to, of course, follow the study that was commissioned that said that almost two-thirds of the villages in Suffolk, Nassau, and Westchester County have the two-year terms, and approximately two-thirds of those villages in those three counties also do not have any benefits for life of any type. It is actually prohibited, according to those villages, and according to the study that the village paid $5,000 for. So, those are a few thoughts that I'd like to share, but I also just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and it's great to see everyone's participation on this topic and issue. And I hope that this board, again, does decide to stick with the two-year terms. If not, I hope they look at the New York State Law 9-908 to determine if it actually is feasible to put it on the ballot, if they don't want to stick with the two-year terms. But if they do choose, unfortunately, to force us to get signatures, I don't want to be the face of this, but I'm happy to hand this out. I've got petitions prepared. It's probably going to take about at least 50 residents to get 10 to 20 signatures per person, but they are available here. I'm happy to hand them out, and people are welcome to contact me to collect the petition, and we could all do this together, one person and one signature at a time. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Jesse. Sage, was there anyone else on line? No. Okay. Anyone else?
No, Jesse's the last one.
Okay, then, anyone else on the board want to say anything?
Because I said what I had to say.
I'll pass right now.
Okay, then...
I think I would just like the attorney to, as people said, they were here to understand and to be clear, and that's what we're here all to understand. And please understand, this is a time for an open dialogue and conversation. There's nothing been set in stone. So, but I would like you to please explain to everyone about lifetime benefits, and that is not the case here as far as the insurance. Can you just reiterate it again, so... Because I've heard several people come up again and quote misinformation.
Okay. Well, my understanding is that the current policy is elected officials receive health insurance while they're in office at zero cost to them, and then when they're out of service, if they had a minimum of five years in service, they receive the same health benefits for the rest of their lives, regardless of their age, et cetera.
At no cost.
At no cost, right.
At no cost to them.
At no cost to them, absolutely.
Correct. That's my point. That's my point, though. That's my point.
Right. So, this would attempt to change that. It would change it. It would... You wouldn't be eligible for health benefits when you were out of service unless you, A, had served the village a minimum of... Currently, it'll be eight, and then it'll be 10 years. And then you also had to reach the age of 62 when you left service of the village in order to be eligible for it. And that was sort of taken from the mandatory... Or not from the mandatory, but from the New York State local retirement system, which the village is part of, their retirement age. And then...
Excuse me, and the 10-year vesting also comports with the state retirement system?
It does, yes.
As well. That was the logic there.
Correct. So, we went to 10 there. And then we also added in that the village elected officials would have to, A, pay for their... Pay toward their... Or contribute toward their health benefits while they're in office. I think the number is 30% there, right? And it's limited by a percent... Like all the village employees, whatever percentage they pay in is limited... Is capped by a percentage of their salary. But when they leave service of the village, if they were otherwise eligible for continued health insurance benefits, they would have to pay in at a cost of 30%. So, you don't get it until you're 65... I, 62, if you're 62. So, the most we would be paying out, the full cost of benefits would be three years, because when they turn 65, they would be eligible for Medicare, and so this would... The village insurance would be a supplemental. That's how it works with most civil service employees also. It works the same way. So, this isn't an increase or anything, this is actually a decrease in what these elected officials get. It's a significant change. And, you know, this law... This policy apparently was the policy of the village for a long time. So, this... And it can be changed by a resolution. So, this board is moving forward to change it. It could have easily been changed at any time by another board, too, if they wanted to eliminate lifetime benefits, so...
I have a question.
Sure.
So, you say, if somebody leaves after 50 years, when they do, out of office...
No, no, they're not eligible.
No, they're not eligible. Ineligible, ineligible.
That's not the way you do it now.
They would have to be in service with 10 years of service and over 62 or older before they became... Before they would be eligible at all, so...
So, this is actually very restrictive in comparison to what has been in place for decades in this village. So, it is a major change, major change.
This has been in place since 1984.
That part of it's been in place.
The woman that lives on Leland Lane, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Valerie Sarah.
Sarah, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just say a thing? I just... Sounds like it's not encouraging... Oh, it's a second. Encouraging people who are younger to run that, because, I mean, you know, we're just... That seems like it's not beneficial for anyone younger who is hoping to get benefits if you have to get certain...
Well...
No, they would get benefits while they were elected.
While they were working.
While they were working, yeah.
And if they serve 10 years.
Yeah, hopefully.
All right. I think at this point, then, I'm going to ask that we close this public hearing on Local Law 19 of 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Communications to the board.
At this time, all the public hearing is done. If anyone is interested in leaving, they can do so.
Okay, I'm just trying, so...
Wait a minute. Barbara, you can't do this. We just closed the public hearing. I'm sorry, Barbara, you had your chance. Let's go to communications to the board. No, that's it. That's it. Communications to the board.
Okay. So, as we proceed, I have 11 communications to the board. The first one is correspondence from Ken and Natalie Sisko, and it's regarding BuzzChew. I sent it to the board, as everyone knows. It's just an overview about the concern that they have for the environment, for the noise, and, you know, the out-of-office hours that they're dealing with their deliveries.
Thank you.
The second one is also from correspondence from Ann Calanan.
Calanan. Can we... Can you ask... Can we...
Okay, I'll stand by one second.
Yeah, let's stand by. We're trying to conduct a meeting here, please.
I'm so sorry. I need your gab. For anyone that's not going to be here, just need to take out five seconds, please, the board. This one, you just have to be there. Thank you very much, folks. I just get a lot of... Sorry, just wanted to be sure. I'll get the chat.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Munson, for coming. Thank you, Ms. Sweeney.
Great. My apologies to the board and to the public. As I continue, communications to the board. The second one is for correspondence from Ann Calanan regarding the water treatment facility and the BuzzChew. Just again, the concerns that we have regarding the noise at BuzzChew and also the water treatment facility location. The third one is correspondence from John Skegnelly, Per Lareen, and Wright regarding BuzzChew. The fourth is correspondence from Vito and Rosa Rita regarding BuzzChew. The fifth is correspondence from Jennifer Rubenstein and Ryan Mash, again, about BuzzChew. And the sixth one is correspondence from Catherine Perembah, and that's regarding school zones. So, just about the safety within the school zones. Number seven is correspondence from Mr. and Mrs. Joseph... Dr. Joseph McLaughlin and Leif McLaughlin regarding the terms. Number eight is correspondence from Shawna Byrne regarding the water treatment and BuzzChew. And number nine is correspondence from Michael Chen regarding unleashed dogs in the village... At the village beaches. And number 10 is correspondence from Peter Witich regarding BuzzChew and the water... The water treatment facility. And again, number 11 is from correspondence from Daniel Leif regarding the water treatment facility and BuzzChew. And that is all for the communications to the board. All of the communications to the board are posted on the agenda, under the Agenda Packet, if anyone wants to refer to it, or you can just see me after the meeting if you'd like to research those as well.
And I would just like to point out that I did have Chief Herto Angel and our Building Inspector, Tin Soho, here to hear and also to see the correspondence in regard to BuzzChew. And Tin, actually, I did want you just to mention that BuzzChew has come forward as of today, I believe, and that they will be coming to the Planning Board, because I think it's good for the public to be aware that they will be coming before the Planning Board, so they are aware of that and will be able to, you know, make themselves available at a future Planning Board meeting if they would so choose to do. So, do you have two seconds, Tin? And then I'm going to let you go home, because it's been a late night, just to let them know that there is going to be an upcoming hearing, I guess, before the Planning Board that BuzzChew will be presenting at.
Good evening. I'm Tin Soho, the Building Inspector, Village of Southampton. They have a preliminary application at this present time. It was not quite complete. They were trying to get on the agenda for the Planning Board for an informal review, but it was suggested to them, because it was very close to being a complete application, that they just provide some additional information, in which case there will be scheduled for a public hearing at the Planning Board for public comment, so...
Do you have an idea of when they might have that public hearing, or when they might be calendared, so that the public would know about that?
Not as of yet.
Okay.
What is it in reference to? Are they expanding?
They are not expanding. It's with respect to the use of the property itself. They have some...
They want to try to change the agreement that they originally signed. It should have a detrimental effect on the board.
But it seems to me that so many of these letters that we've received are pretty much just notifications of code violation. Why aren't we addressing them? Why aren't we giving them citations for doing their work when they're not supposed to be doing it?
They are getting citations.
They are.
They are. We're just continually disrespecting it and going along with it.
They're out of compliance, and I know it's not an open meeting, but I honestly...
Well, no, no, we can't get into whole discussion, actually. So, the thing is, they are in court, so we can't get into litigation at this time, but I would welcome you making an appointment with my assistant, and we can sit down in my office and discuss it further. But we can't... I don't want to do that in an open meeting, especially with the situation there. But I did want the public to be aware that they will be coming into the Planning Board, and I just wanted you to be aware, to be on the, you know, to watch for that, so that you can be aware of that. So, that's really it. Thank you, Tin, very much. I appreciate it. Now, you can go home. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Mark, you're not allowed to speak again. What... No, no, Mark.
You're not allowed to speak again.
No, 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 Mark. We can't... Was it important? What is it?
What is it?
It's about the fact that the Planning Commission is also reviewing the penalties.
Okay, that's fine, but that's enough. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mark. I did want to, at this time, before we go into the suggested resolutions, I did want to recognize our outgoing administrator, Charlene Kegel Betts, and read the proclamation that I read at her retirement party, because I think it's just important to be able to share this with others. So, it's a little lengthy, but I hope everyone's... So it's, it's a little lengthy, but I hope everyone will bear with me. Whereas Charlene joined the village as administrator, clerk, and treasurer in 2020, serving all roles with enthusiasm and steadfast competence; and whereas Charlene was a steady force as village administrator, guiding the departments through change and progress, creating greater efficiency; and whereas Charlene oversaw all departments and worked alongside everyone with grace, dignity, and utmost professionalism; and whereas Charlene served the village with distinction and great skills as treasurer in advancing its finances to a never-before-achieved level of sophistication and transparency; and whereas Charlene, excuse me, hold on, transformed the treasury department by implementing zero-based budgeting and developing a three-year capital budget; and whereas Charlene, with her institutional knowledge and leadership, achieved a triple-A bond rating for the village from Moody's Investor Services. Now therefore, I, William M. Mangere Jr., Mayor of Southampton Village, do hereby proudly present this proclamation to Charlene Cagle Betts as we celebrate and greatly appreciate your dedication, tenacity, and commitment for serving our village. In witness thereof, we hereunto set our hand to this day, first day of November in the year of our Lord 2023, do hereby recognize and congratulate Charlene Cagle Betts. So we already did this once, but we can do it again if you want.
If you do.
Anyway, it is really much appreciated, the work that you did, because you, you have transformed the finances of the village, and we are glad that you're going to be able to stay on and help us with the transition of the treasurer role into next year's budget. And so we really appreciate that. So thank you very much, Charlene.
And I just want to make note that it's the first time that the village ever had a triple-A bond rating, and that's all because of the hard work of Charlene.
And I might add that with the bond that we just went out for, we got an interest rate of 4.13, and I would venture that no one could get a, an interest rate from a bank at 4.13 today. So again, that is saving the taxpayers a lot of money on the money from that, that bond that we were able to get because of the triple-A rating that Charlene helped us get. So again, thank you very much, Charlene. All right, now we'll go to suggested resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number one, resolve the claims of the warrant dated November 9th, 2023 totaling 890,483, warrant A, 12, general fund, and 8,564,32, warrant H, 6, capital fund, are audited and approved. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number two, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering amending Chapter 93-11 of the Village Code of Southampton, fees for services by amending the fees for SWP, PPP, applications, inspections, and SMP maintenance; and whereas a public hearing was held by the Village Board on November 9th, 2023, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard; and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has determined that this proposed local law is considered a type-two action under Number 6 NYCRR Part 617.5, provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SECR, and that no further review under New York Environmental Conservation Law Article 8 is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that local law Number 18 of 2023 is hereby adopted. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number three, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering adding Chapter 11 to the Village Code of Southampton, amending the terms of office of the village mayor and the village trustees from four, excuse me, from two years to four years; and whereas a public hearing was held by the Village Board on November 9th, 2023, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard; and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has determined that this proposed local law is considered a type-two action under Number 6 NYCRR Part 617.5, provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as SECR, and that no further review under New York Environmental Conservation Law Article 8 is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that local law Number 19 of 2023 is hereby adopted. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this for the time being.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table. Resolution number four, whereas the Village Board has undertaken a review of the terms of office as well as the salary and benefits package historically afforded to those village officials serving in elected positions of the Village of Southampton, here and after elected officials; and whereas the Village Board of Trustees received and reviewed the results of a professionally conducted survey commissioned by the Village Board of Trustees of the terms of office, compensation, and health plan benefits of elected officials in other village governments in the state; and whereas the Village Board of Trustees has determined that an amendment to the existing Southampton Village Board of Trustees salaries as well as the policy regarding the provision of health insurance plan benefits for those serving in elected positions is warranted; and whereas currently there is no minimum age requirement for entitlement to health benefits upon retiring from the village; and whereas currently the length of service requirement for entitlement to health benefits upon retiring from the village is five years; and whereas the Village Board of Trustees has determined that the minimum age and length of service required prior to entitlement of retirement health benefits should be increased; and whereas the Village Board of Trustees additionally consider the fairness and impact of amending the existing policy regarding the provision of health insurance plan benefits in the middle of an elected official's service to the village and determine that fairness dictates that the amended policy should be phased in; and whereas the salaries of the mayor and the members of the Board of Trustees have not been increased at all since 2007, now therefore be it resolved that the health, dental, and vision care benefits provided to current elected officials shall be available as follows. Health benefits elected officials of the Village of Southampton as of November 9th, 2023, shall be eligible for health, dental, and vision care benefits covering, coverage during their employment with the village. For health benefits, 20% of the current premium through payroll deduction not to exceed 5% of annual base salary. If the village changes insurance carriers, the insurance policy must be equal to or better than the previous policy. Upon retirement from the village, any current member of the Board of Trustees, including the mayor, with eight years of service with the village, who has also reached the age of 62 years prior to said retirement, will be entitled to retiree dental, optical benefits at no cost, and health benefits will be provided with contributions from said officials according to the following. Letter A, eight years of service with the village, 30%. Letter B, at 15 years of service with the village, 25%. Letter C, at least 20 years of service with the village, 20%. Health benefits stipend, elected officials of the Village of Southampton who waive or opt out of health insurance while actively employed shall be entitled to an annual stipend in accordance with the Department Head Benefit Package; and be it further resolved that the health, dental, and vision care benefits provided to future elected officials shall be available as follows. Health benefits, elected officials of the Village of Southampton shall be eligible for health, dental, and vision care benefits coverage during their employment with the village. For health benefits, the officials shall be responsible for 20% of the current premium through payroll deduction not to exceed 5% of annual base salary. If the village changes insurance carriers, the insurance policy must be equal to or better than the previous policy. Upon retirement from the village, any elected official of the Village of Southampton with 10 years of service with the village as an elected official who has also reached the age of 62 years prior to said retirement will be entitled to retiree dental, optical benefits at no cost, and health benefits will be provided with contributions from said officials according to the following. Letter D, 10 years of service with the village, 30%. Letter E, at least 15 years of service with the village, 25%. Letter F, at least 20 years of service with the village, 20%. Health benefits stipend, elected officials of the Village of Southampton who waive or opt out of health insurance while actively employed shall be entitled to an annual stipend in accordance with the Department Head Benefit Package; and be it further resolved that the salary of the mayor shall be increased to $35,000 annually, and the salary of each board member shall be increased to $20,500 annually; and be it further resolved that said increases to salary and contributions to health insurance premiums take effect on January 1, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number five, resolve the Board of Trustees approves a proposal from Nelson, Pope, and Voorhees for the engineering for Boden Square Bioswell in the amount of $46,000 to be paid from Water Quality Reserve Funds. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number six.
I'm so sorry. Excuse Mr. Wrong.
Mr. Wrong.
Mr. Wrong.
Mr. Wrong.
Mr. Wrong. I'm so sorry. Sorry. Thank you, folks.
Let's resume. Resolution number six, the Board of Trustees amends a 2023-24 capital budget to include a streetlight extension to the northernmost section of North Sea Road in the amount of $81,000 to purchase antique LED streetlights to be funded as follows. Transfer $71,000 from special revenue, CS869, streetlights to capital reserve, H95110, major equipment. Increase H5182, streetlight reserve in the amount of $71,000. Increase capital reserves in the amount of $10,000. Do I have a, excuse me. This law is subject to a permissive referendum and therefore shall not take effect until 30 days after its adoption or until approved by a majority vote of the qualified electors of the village voting on such proposition for its approval if within 30 days after its adoption a petition is filed with the village clerk pursuant to Village Law Section 9-9021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Just a question.
Yes.
I just, why, why is this, why would it be subject to permissive referendum?
It's not. I don't know how that--
No, Charlene, Charlene explained it.
It might be because of the bond.
That's correct.
Yes, that is correct. I can elaborate on that. That was because of the increase in capital reserves.
Okay, all right.
But, and just a brief discussion, this is actually to help, again, increase the attractiveness of the entrance to the village, coming off of County Road 39 from North Sea. As you come into the village, we wanted to add streetlights on either side of North Sea Road. We're also going to be adding trees to either side of the road and improving the plantings in the middle, where we have those grasses at the moment, not the most attractive entrance to the village. So this is a whole relook at the, again, the entrance to the village at the northern end there, as you come in by 7-Eleven and McDonald's, to really enhance the entrance at the northern side of North Sea Road. So I think this will go a long way. It's actually 19 lights that match the ones on Main Street that will line either side from County Road 39 to the train trestle, and really, I think, will, will really enhance that, that part of the village. So it'll look a lot better. Yes?
Yes.
No, no, that's North Main Street. No, 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 this is North Sea Road.
North Sea Road.
This is North Sea Road. So it's going to be by the clam man and, and, you know, there are different businesses along there. I can't name them all.
And send the island there and improve the--
Anyway.
--things on the island.
I'm sure Nancy McGann will appreciate it. Yeah, you were always trying to beautify the village, so this will, this will, this will enhance that. All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number seven, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the following amendment to the 2022-23 and 2023-24 capital budget for village hall lead paint abatement and an increase in the total project to the amount of $315,000. Increase village hall lead paint abatement, 23-24, in the amount of $85,000. Decrease veterans' hall lead paint abatement, 22-23, and 23-24, in the amount of $85,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that and discussion. I'd just like to explain to the public exactly what this is. Everyone knows our beautiful village hall is not so beautiful with the front of it just, just peeling away. And in order to start the improvements, it's lead paint. So you're going to be seeing some scaffolding that's going to go up in front of village hall and around certain areas of village hall so we could start making the very needed repairs on this building. It's very expensive, and this is just for the lead abatement, but this is the first step. And as they remove the lead, they're going to say, this has to be fixed and this wood has to be done. So we're working on that. And there were some people today also from Johnson Controls that were looking at the windows, so the work on village hall has, is, will begin with this. So as soon as this PO is sent, they're on notice, ready to, to go. So that's what's going to be going on when you see the, this scaffolding going up around the building. Thank you.
Resolution number eight, resolve the--
We didn't, we didn't pass that yet, did we?
We did.
Oh, did we?
We did, all in favor? We can repeat.
Let's do it again.
Resolution number seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Five, zero unanimous. No worries. Resolution number eight, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the application submission for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant for Southampton Daycare Center and Heart of the Hamptons and authorizes the mayor or designate to execute any documentation that may be required regarding the allocation of received funds. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number nine, whereas the Village of Southampton's Nugent Street Bioswell Grant Project awarded by the Southampton Town Community Preservation Fund and Suffolk County WQPRP requires planting to be installed, now therefore be it resolved, Board of Trustees approves the purchase of plants from Nelson, Pope, and Voorhees not to exceed $30,000 and approves the installation of these plantings by HTC Landscaping at a cost not to exceed $55,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Resolution number 10, the Board of Trustees retroactively approves the proposal submitted by Nancy Kane to coordinate our 11th Annual Southampton Fest to be held Friday, September 29th, 2023, to Sunday, October 1st, 2023. This proposal is $16,500 funded by Trustee Special Projects. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. And lastly, resolution number 11, whereas the Village of Southampton regularly requires the advice and assistance of experienced and qualified professional individuals and/or firms to provide planning, engineering, and environmental review services on a variety of issues and projects presented by the village; and whereas the village is conscious of the importance of these services as well as the cost and quality thereof; and whereas the village has been retaining these professionals on a project or as needed basis; and whereas the village is determined that it would like to have an expanded approval list of professionals to draw from as needed with an agreed-to rate for their time and services; and whereas the village has determined that utilizing a formal request for proposals is likely to expand the professionals available to assist the village. Now therefore be it resolved that the village shall issue an annexed request for proposals on November 13th, 2023, and shall publish a notice of the request for proposals. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero unanimous. Mr. Mayor, this concludes the resolutions.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So we'll go to comments from board members, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor Resta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First, Veterans Day is Saturday, and, which it always is on, in the 11th month, the 11th day at the 11th hour, and there is a, the ceremony that we always have in Agawam Park. Today, I had the honor of meeting, or seeing, because I know Tom Gouldy. I had the honor of meeting, or seeing, because I know Tom Gouldy. He is a U.S. Army Vietnam veteran, and he was honored today at the, uh, the Kiwanis Meeting, uh, sorry, not Kiwanis, Rotary Meeting. And, uh, he's gonna be talking about his time that he spent, uh, in the service as a canine specialist. So he has quite the story to tell. Uh, but I am the daughter of a veteran and a niece of, I had many, many uncles that served in World War II. Uh, this is a great day. I have great appreciation for, uh, veterans, all our veterans that have served, uh, through, throughout the years. And, uh, I, hopefully it's gonna be a beautiful day and there'll be a very big gathering. And, uh, happy Veterans Day to our veteran, uh, in residence here, Ms. Kathy Sweeney, who's an Air Force, uh, veteran and.
And Sergeant Dorch.
Oh, you too? Air Force?
No, I was Navy.
He was Navy.
Oh, you were Navy. Oh, okay.
We have a couple. We have Navy, forever is Navy. Tim Muller, Coast Guard.
Yeah.
Mexican Fed is Air Force.
Yeah, so we have, we have many veterans that work for us. My dad was Army Air Force, so that was the World War II before they actually, that's old school, that's right. So, uh, hopefully we could all, um, you know, be there on Saturday to, uh, honor those that, uh, fought for this country. And it just reminded me, somebody mentioned, uh, they were talking about the World War One monument. Uh, that has not been forgotten. Uh, there was some money raised. Was that you? Did you mention that, Mindy? We have a couple of things in, uh, in, uh, that are happening, but they're not in place yet. And, uh, we have our village historian working on it. We're looking to get grant money to get the rest of that, um, that bar up, uh, because I, it's been steady now. Yeah, I know. So in fact, today I was on a call with, uh, the Loda's office, and they're helping us with some of the grant money. And, uh, you're gonna see a few changes there because we have to change the fence, and so it is a work in progress.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, just a little bit about the paving schedule. Uh, you're gonna see signs going around. Uh, the paving is gonna start November thirteenth, uh, the full, uh, paving schedule. And, uh, there's, uh, Maple Street, Breeze Lane. They also, uh, correct some drainage on Breeze and Cooper Street, uh, Holsey Street, Corrigan, Meadowmere, and Fordham. So, uh, you'll see that, uh, going up. And, um, I, I just have to address what was, what everybody was, um, it, it, I, I kind of feel bad because a lot of the things that came up tonight about, uh, the, uh, terms, uh, then, um, or there was some misinformation that was sent out this morning and on a few social media sites. And, uh, we both, I know myself, the mayor, a few of us, uh, got a lot of phone calls today and people, because of the misinformation that was sent out, I think that's what resulted this evening. Uh, this, we've had the presentations, as I said before, uh, the Planning Commission, Walt Dean made a, a presentation as well. Uh, the Planning Commission had meetings about this that I, I listened to. Uh, Michelangelo Lieberman uh, said some things about, um, why it's important, why it's more beneficial at this time to have a four-year, uh, a term. Uh, we've been listening since, uh, March, April, so this was not something that we just put on the agenda, uh, a couple of days ago. So, um, there, there have been meetings, studies, and, uh, as I said, this should not have been a surprise. And it's unfortunate that people are not listening to what the facts really are and listening to misinformation that's been put out on social media. So, um, and with that, I just, um, hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Resta. We'll go to Trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to say that it was a long time coming, but it has arrived. This was going back into March, and I don't know if, uh, I had a chance to speak to my trustees and mayor about this, but I was looking for, um, funds for downtown revitalization. And, uh, we have one of our grant writers, Nicole Christian, and this is going back into March. And I'm so pleased to say that Southampton African-American Museum was awarded for the downtown revitalization ten thousand five hundred dollars. So that is so exciting. I thought it was a little lost in the water, but, uh, it reemerged and we're quite excited about that. And the other great news is that also Southampton Arts Center was awarded twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the downtown revitalization. We know how key they are as far as keeping the culture and the history, and they are excellent in drawing and, um, you know, visitors. So we're so happy that we're, this funding is available to them and it helps the arts as well as, uh, as well as the village. And last but not least, I'd like to welcome, I'm so sorry that my notes did not have it, but, uh, welcoming our new executive director to the Southampton History Museum. And here is what is so exciting. I was looking for some grants with Nicole Christian, and about forty-eight hours before the deadline, I called the new executive director and I said, I think there's a grant here that would suit you just right. And so as a team member, we came together in less than forty-eight hours, we were able to make the deadline. And I'm happy to say, are you ready? I should get a drumroll on this one. Uh, they've been awarded one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the grant money. So I'm so excited, and here's the beauty of teamwork. So cheers. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Brown. We'll go to Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to take my time to, uh, provide my thoughts, opinions, reasoning regarding the Pond Lane Southampton Gardens project that was addressed tonight and some of the public comment. And I just want to talk a little bit about what my thoughts about it are. Um, back in two thousand and twenty-one, when I was first elected, uh, to this board, I spoke in my campaign that my, um, reasons for running were, were to preserve the rural character of the village and remediate Lake Agawam, improve the ecology of our area. A little after that election, I was privileged to walk the two plots of land that Mr. John Paulson had purchased on the western side of Pond Lane overlooking the lake. And at that point, I walked those, that area with him, then Mayor Warren, and landscape architect Peter Marino. And I found out for the first time, uh, Mr. Paulson's vision to donate these properties that he had acquired, uh, for many millions of dollars to the Village of Southampton to create a world-class landscaped park designed by Peter Marino. Uh, I'd also had the privilege, privilege of meeting Mr. Marino in the campaign and going actually to see the gardens in, at his house. And they're incredible. Uh, they are not frou-frou little gardens. They look like, uh, the wilderness, but organized, is all I can say. And they're incredibly beautiful. And to walk the properties overlooking Lake Agawam and hear these two gentlemen, Mr. Paulson and Mr. Marino, talk about what they had in mind, I was like, this is incredible. I had spoken during my campaign about how I had been a little, when I was a little boy, I used to go down and fish in Lake Agawam. And of course, nobody can do that. Now you can't even put your toe in the water. So I was just thrilled, uh, that this might happen. And then Marino said, and even better, we can take the water from the lake because all these plantings are gonna need irrigation. And the water from the lake is nitrogen-rich. That's one of its problems. And we'll use it to irrigate the plants who love nitrogen. And they'll take the nitrogen and the cleaner water will filter back down through the ground and back into the lake, and it will clean the lake in the process. Unlike the gentleman who spoke tonight, who said the park would make the lake more polluted, it will clean Lake Agawam. So, put that two together, and the fact that we could somehow address two things that I had been so passionate about and create a wonderful resources encompassing the existing Agawam Park, the restored Pierce Concert House, the plot the CPF already owned south of the Concert House, and Mr. Paulson's acres would basically create a twenty-acre oasis right in the middle of the Village of Southampton. Instead of having two more multimillion-dollar houses built up there that nobody ever again would be able to walk up on those properties unless you were a guest of the billionaire owners who would, who would own them. Well, there are many moving pieces to get that done. And sometime later, I was having discussions with town supervisor Jay Schneiderman about getting CPF funding for the reconstruction of the Pierce Concert House and, uh, the use of Dozier Park to locate the Algae Harvester, which the village was in the process of acquiring to begin the incredibly necessary task of cleaning Lake Agawam. And Supervisor Schneiderman mentioned to me at that point that locating the Algae Harvester in Dozier Park would require the alienation of that parkland, which by law had to be set up by the acquisition of similar parkland. He proposed that this would be the northern plot that Mr. Paulson was offering to the village, that the, the CPF would buy that property back from Mr. Paulson to, to serve as the property that would counterbalance the alienation of Dozier Park. The towns offered to purchase that lot had conditions, and those conditions were spelled out in a lit, letter written by town attorney James Burke. And I quote, "The offer to purchase one thirty-seven Pond Lane is contingent upon completion of the following by the Village of Southampton. Pond Lane will be closed to automobiles and other motorized vehicles." So that was the condition to get this done. Why does the town want the road closed? Well, because in addition to Southampton Garden, the town sees this area becoming a broader recreational resource for the local people. As the lake becomes clean, it could be used for water recreation, such as sailing or kayaking. The area between the garden and the lake could be used for biking and strolling. People would be walking from the existing park to the new gardens. Having biking pedestrians and people focused on recreating, sharing the same space with cars going up and down Pond Lane would be unsafe. So the town therefore improved safety, wanted to close Pond Lane. I believe, and I believe a strong majority of village residents believe the park and the preservation of open space is a good thing. There is a concern, of course, about cost. Will it cost the taxpayer to create the park, or equally importantly, to maintain it in the future? Mr. Paulson and the Lake Agawam Conservancy have committed to paying the park's construction costs and creating a fund endowed with more than ten million dollars to cover ongoing maintenance. Let's be clear, none of this will happen without Mr. Paulson's contribution. His initial vision was that Pond Lane would be closed. The town, as I've, as I've mentioned, also specified that Pond Lane would be closed. Now, when the first draft of the plan for the park was unveiled several months ago, the Board of Trustees and the Lake Agawam Conservancy emphasized that public input would be sought and carefully considered. Since then, we have had at least two public meetings, including one at the Cultural Center where at least twenty-five residents spoke on the issue. We have received many letters from residents. I personally, and I know my fellow board members also, have spent many hours in conversation with residents about the park. In all honesty, I would estimate, based on the input that I've received, the public favors the park even if it requires closing Pond Lane by a significant majority. But we listened to the concerns and have worked diligently to negotiate a compromise, an improved plan that would allow Pond Lane to remain open, but with the following conditions. It would be one-way, heading from south to north, starting at the foot of Pond Lane where it curves northward from First Neck Lane. And it would be closed to motorized vehicles on weekends and holidays when people would be most likely using the area for biking, walking, and recreating. The town has agreed to back off from their total closure of the road to approve this recite plan and conditions. And I believe Mr. Paulson has indicated that he would be willing to consider it as well. It is a compromise, and of course, no compromise ever makes everybody happy. But those who love driving down Pond Lane will still be able to drive down it, albeit not every day. The one-way road will eliminate those who speed from the village down Pond Lane at rush hour to try and get dogs pasture and avoid the rush hour traffic on Hill Street, which inevitably causes huge backups on Captain's Neck Lane and Lee Avenue when those same meat vehicles must wait to make a left turn back onto Hill Street. Now, somebody said, why are we working so hard to please one person, Mr. Paulson? Mr. Paulson is donating to the village over twenty, is offering to donate to the, over twenty million dollars. Without his money, without the town CPF funds, there is no park. I believe the park is a good thing for the Village of Southampton. Now, unfortunately, if Mr. Paulson decides there's too much controversy and criticism and pulls the plug, there will be no park. And that would be a tragedy, a huge lost opportunity to create something meaningful and wonderful for citizens of this village for time immemorial. For those who would like to pursue a different plan, Mr. Paulson has offered to sell the land at his cost. So far, none of the people offering alternate plans have suggested that they are willing to step forward with the millions of dollars needed. I believe the park is an incredible opportunity to create a lasting benefit people years from now will continue to enjoy. Years from now, people will wander the park trails and be thankful for Mr. Paulson's generosity and this board's determination to make it a reality. And I would hope that one day other children will be able to once again fish in Lake Agawam. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson. We'll go to Trustee Zananti.
Thank you, Mayor. In consideration of, uh, the discussion tonight, um, and I understand everybody's very opinionated about the length of terms and it has had.
Trustee Zananti, just move it closer.
I'm sorry. And, and it has had a his.
Make sure you're heard.
And it has had, uh, a tortured history in the past. One of the things, uh, one of the matters of substance that were not brought up was that we have a lot of needs and a lot of projects that I know this board is working on sewer cell coverage, uh, and some other big things. And I think the, the history of churn in two-year terms has really kind of worked to the detriment of accomplishing some of the things that this village really needs. So I just wanted to put that out on the table, that as a substantive matter, uh, we have a better chance of accomplishing things with longer terms with leadership in, in place. Uh, with respect to the health insurance, which, uh, we were very familiar with when I was on the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee because of the OPEB liability, uh, adding the minimum age requirement to age sixty-two, lengthening the term of service requirement, uh, vesting rights to ultimately ten years, and adding, uh, the co-pay for annual salary as well as the retiree co-pay will not only make the benefits that the board and the mayor get comparable to the department heads, but it will also benefit the books of the village. It will limit, it will tend to limit the OPEB liability. So it'll be beneficial in that respect. Uh, and with respect to the compensation, no increase has occurred since two thousand and seven. And the math was a two percent as, as, as attorney, uh, village attorney pointed out, uh, the cost of living was calculated since two thousand and seven at a compounded two percent annual rate. Uh, and that is, again, akin to what, uh, our department heads have been getting. So, uh, I don't think any of these things are particularly out of line, and I think, uh, uh, the good reasons for them were not really articulated tonight. And, and I agree with my colleague Deputy Mayor Resta with respect to misinformation that, that might have incited, uh, people. The, the Patty Dwyer report was very important, and we did not ignore it, uh, despite what was said tonight. Uh, but there was one very important issue that the Patty Dwyer report did not cover. Uh, and to me, it is the requirements that these jobs are and the time it takes. These are full-time jobs. Um, I spend between twenty and sometimes more than forty hours a week working. As, as our village attorney knows, we, we were hashing some proposed legislation last Saturday. So, uh, it's not work hours, it's all the time. Uh, and we have heard from, uh, consultants and outside observers that this board does have, uh, a noble spirit with respect to its workload. And I think that is, uh, another thing that I just wanted to get out on the table. It is, it is a full-time job. Uh, and I know we volunteer for these positions, but it's a full-time job. Uh, I do also, on a lighter note, want to say that I attended the open house last Sunday, November fifth, and saw the Southampton Fire Department Volunteer Ambulance and Ocean Rescue and Police Department, uh, who were available at Lake Agawam to show their equipment and explain their services to the citizens of the village. And it was a great day. And finally, our next, uh, meeting, we'll have a presentation on the work being done by the members of the Planning Commission and the police, fire, and ambulance services to enhance communications in the village for public safe, for the public safety departments as well as for the general, uh, public. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much, Trustee Zananti. Um, and I want to thank all of the members of the public that came out tonight. Uh, it is always encouraging to so, see so many members of the community want to participate in their local government. And I do sincerely appreciate, uh, them coming out and wanting to be heard. And, and I want them to know that we do listen, we hear them, uh, we take into account everything that they say. And, uh, that is, that is the reason why we are here as representatives of their government to, uh, hear what they say and take into account everything that, uh, that they, uh, want to explain to us. And I appreciate that. Uh, I also want to, um, mention that, um, we, uh, recently purchased a fire truck, uh, for the, uh, Fire Department. And, um, I worked diligently with the Fire Department and. I worked diligently with the fire department and on the contract with that fire truck, and I do want to let the village residents, and especially all those taxpayers, know that I was able to save $106,000 because of paying close attention to the contract. The manufacturer had put in a clause in the contract that actually wanted to have a part where it was tied to the Consumer Price Index, so that they could possibly increase the price of the fire truck over time before it was fully delivered to the village, because it takes two and a half years to build this fire truck in Wisconsin before it is delivered to the fire department, and I obviously argued with them upon seeing this clause in the, in the contract, and they were pressuring me to make sure that I signed it before November 2nd, or the price would go up anyway, and I was able to negotiate with the manufacturer of the fire truck that if we were to make a down payment, they would take that clause out of the contract, and we would realize a savings of $106,000. So I just want to say, this mayor is working for you, the taxpayer, and we are doing everything we can to watch every dollar that is spent, and we are, we are good watchdogs of the public coffers, and we will have a first-class fire truck delivered in approximately two and a half years that the firemen specked out, and it is being manufactured in Wisconsin, and will be delivered to the fire department as a replacement for them. But I just want to let the public know that we are working hard to save every dollar that we can, and in this instance, we were able to save $106,000, which is not chump change. Anyway, I also want to just recognize that tomorrow, we will observe Veterans Day here in the village. Veterans Day officially will be celebrated on Saturday in Agawam Park, as Deputy Mayor Resta mentioned. Reverend Paul Lent of the First Presbyterian Church will give the invocation. He is the new minister at the Presbyterian Church. I have met him a couple of times. He is excellent. He came down from upstate New York, and I would encourage everybody to come to that ceremony, and also to meet the new minister of the First Presbyterian Church, the oldest Presbyterian church in the United States, a very nice man and his family, and to be there to honor all of our veterans. It certainly should be a nice turnout. The weather's supposed to be good, and since it's on a Saturday this year, I'm hoping we will have even a larger turnout. And finally, I just want to mention, people maybe that saw the Southampton Press this week, that we are having two members of the British Armed Forces, a member of the British Army and a member of the Royal Air Force of the United Kingdom, coming all the way from Southampton, England, to be here on Remembrance Sunday. They celebrate Remembrance Sunday in the UK. They will be here on Sunday afternoon in Agawam Park at sundown to lay a wreath at Agawam Park in commemoration of all veterans, but also the special relationship that exists between the United Kingdom and the United States, as they have been allies with us through many wars and many conflicts over at least a couple centuries after the revolution. But anyway, I think it's a nice gesture that they're making the effort to come all the way here. The Lord Mayor of Southampton, England, is going to present me with a letter. I'm going to present them with a letter to take back to her, and I would really encourage members of the community to please come out and welcome these two British officers to Southampton, New York, and to be there for the wreath laying at approximately 4:30, I think, is sundown on Sunday, although the service will probably start maybe 3:30, 4 o'clock, and if they want to be there for the wreath laying, I think that would be great, and certainly would appreciate that to show them our gratitude for them coming all the way across, across the ocean to be here with us on Remembrance Sunday. And with that, I don't think we have executive session, so with that, I will just close the meeting. I ask for, again, a motion to close this meeting at 8:35 PM on November 9th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Good night.